Here. Dr. Renner, would you please read this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where our wishes stand: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask for a motion and a second to suspend the rules and return to workshop. Turn it.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Crabtree, seconded by Mr. Paulson. Please, Senator, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Berman?
Yes.
The motion passes. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Shul.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. We have three topics on the committee, the whole agenda this evening, and the first two certainly relate to each other and do relate to, um, to a one of the board's goals, which is the future of instruction and technology. So I'm going to turn the meeting over first to Faith, who's going to get us started with that. And then after we do the update on the future of instruction and technology goal, Rob is going to follow up then with the master technology plan, which is driven directly from the focus on FIT. So, thank you.
Great. I'm excited to talk to you tonight about all the great things that have been happening with FIT. I'm not going to do all the talking. I brought some experts, classroom teachers, that are going to demonstrate a little bit and talk about what they've been doing. I want to start out with just kind of a reminder of why we started down this road of FIT. We are in kind of unprecedented amount of change that's happening, and we're in that weird state of trying to educate students for a world that we don't really know about yet. On average, the students that are graduating right now are going to have 17 jobs or careers in their lifetime. They're going to have to use a whole lot of technology that I can't even fathom that's going to be here in 20 years. And the good news is, is we already know that they're going to be valued for their creativity and their problem solving more than the knowledge that they have. They can use the phone, the device right there, and they'll got as much endless free information and knowledge as they can. So if you look at kind of where we are on this new age, you look at, we're at agriculture industry, we have this, all this excitement about information, and now we have huge computer databases that can do all of that. We're now at the conceptual age, where it's going to be relying on us to be creative, be able to work collaboratively with each other, and that's the new skillset. This kind of just talks a little bit more about the conceptual age. Our kids are going to have to have the emotional intelligence to deal with a whole lot of change, deal with a lot of different perspectives. They're going to need to be really complex thinkers. You think about how much data and information that comes at them in a rapid amount of time. They're going to have to make sense of all of that and draw connections. So with that, we need to not reinvent and think like, well, we need all new schools. But we do have to think about seeing what we do with different eyes. And because of that, we started the FIT group. We knew already that knowledge was not enough. It's really what you can do with all that knowledge, being able to read, write, map, all of that stuff. It's what you can do with it. We needed to think a lot about our learning environment. So this is the FIT committee members. We didn't start off with a group that was large, but this year there became such more focus and emphasis that we added members so that every school has at least one person on the FIT committee. And to take you back in time a little bit, that initial FIT group worked on creating this vision for the learning environment. And I just want to kind of emphasis on this is that students do a lot. The emphasis is having kids access, synthesize, and share knowledge while kids collaborate and create anytime, anywhere. We have to design experiences that they're going to have to think about critical thinking. They have to put it into real-life problem solving. And that does not mean that we're forgetting about mastering standards and skills. They have to have all of that, but then know how to apply it out into the real world and to be able to collaborate and create. So it's not, we're not doing the basics anymore. You need the basics and then some to be able to be productive. The good news is, this is a really busy screen, but if you look up at the upper right-hand corner, the good news is, they already get it. They already are coming in knowing and learning in the way that we need them to. Up in the corner, the green is the baby boomer of what it meant to be effectively engaged in kind of what instruction looks like. And over on the other side is the Generation Z. These students who already have access to all of the information all the time, they are not wanting to sit and listen. They want to do. They're used to doing and creating and managing all the time. They are not wanting to, okay, listen and the teacher's wanting to be the expert on curriculum content. They want somebody to facilitate their learning process. We're baby boomers who had closed book exams. Generation Z is going to have an open world. They can all the devices, get all the people that you want, internet, but what can you do with that is going to be the emphasis. So here's a document that you should be familiar with. This is the District 200 Learning Environment. That wonderful vision statement is across the top. And then this year, at all of our schools, we are focusing on collaboration and creation. As I go through, we do walkthroughs with my team. We're looking for, does every classroom have time for students to collaborate in small groups? Are they creatively working together, taking some risks, doing problem solving? And then we're also looking at standards mastery, those key skills that they're going to need to be able to do that. What does that look like? Is it engaging to be a formative assessment? Are they getting lots of feedback? So those are the two areas we provided a lot of professional development for this year, but I want to remind you that all of those things are really important. We're not forgetting about those, but we're putting extra emphasis on those for this year. All right. So things have been busy, busy, busy. In August, we made it a new procedure that all of the school improvement plans would include FIT. All of the principal evaluations would include components of FIT. And then our week of learning really highlighted how it fits into the FIT learning environment. Anybody keeping tabs how many times I said FIT tonight? Right. So in the fall, we went on and talked about, we need more reps. So we added people, as I already said, to the FIT team. And then we got the principals together and had them collaborate and create over their school improvement plans and their goals in small groups so that they would have that learning environment piece too. And then our walkthroughs, we've done all of the middle schools twice, the high schools twice, the elementary schools once, and I'm getting ready to do all the elementary schools here in the next month with the walkthroughs. And that is a really rich conversation when you walk through classrooms and then you sit down with the principal and you can actually see differences from the last time that we were in. Our classrooms are trying out new things and are really working on that collaboration part. January, we met with all the principals individually and talked specifically about their school goals with FIT. And then we worked on universal access. I'm not going to go into that right now because that's going to be part of the presentation later, but we did work out what would a checkout system for students be so they could have some of these devices to go home. And then the other things that we're working on are the curriculum update, workouts. We have Lee in the room. Lee does an amazing training. She does, just gets this whole room full of people that are so excited. They go back and try out things. And then most of the buildings then had them share out at institute days, faculty meetings, and doing a train, a trainer. Going really, really well with that. And then the buildings, if you see the agendas that come out on institute days, almost everybody had full days or at least half-days on just FIT and what that means. And teachers presenting to teachers, collaboration, creation, and action. And then the new science standards, March 4, really big day in the district. We have a whole lot going on with the new science standards, and teachers are going to actually get in and build and do and have this learning environment around engineering standards on that day. All right, enough from me. You want to hear from the people who do the really, really great work. So I'm going to call John up first, and he's going to share a little bit about some things that are going on in his classroom.
Greetings. My name is John Kavilius. I am a fourth-grade teacher at Johnson Elementary School. I'm also a lifelong resident of Warrenville, Illinois, and a product of District 200. I grew up and attended school at Bauer Elementary. I also attended school at Hubble Middle School. I'm a proud graduate of the Warrenville South, class of 2007. I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about how I incorporate FIT into my classroom. Let me tell you, FIT is going to change instruction in District 200, and it's really going to empower our students and lead them into the 21st century. And here you can see some of my eager students here. And my students here are using clickers. And what clickers are is paper clickers. However, I'm able to use a smart device such as my iPhone or an iPad, and I'm able to collect data instantaneously from my students. So last week, we studied the metric system. We learned how to convert between milliliters to liters and grams to kilograms, all that fun stuff. And I wanted to see how well my students were doing on this standard. So I created a quick assessment in which I was able to ask my students questions relating to the standard. And students would raise their piece of paper up either in the direction of A, B, C, or D, depending on what they felt the answer was. And with my phone, I was able to scan each piece of paper and on my phone, get real-time results. So right then and there, I was able to see how well my students were doing on the standard. Were they meeting my targets? And the really neat thing about this was, it allowed me to change my instruction, and that is the heart of formative assessment. Formative assessment is only formative when it changes future instruction. And I was able to see the needs of my students and differentiate. Some of my students did an awesome job. They got all the questions right. And I had to figure out a way to enrich their instruction so that they can move past my standard. Some students need more practice, and I was able to provide them with the practice they needed. And then some students needed to be re-taught the skills in a different way. So not only was I able to collect data, but students were able to see on the TV monitor, right there in the corner, how they were doing. So they were able to self-assess. They were able to get that timely feedback on how well they were doing with the learning target. And that's another key component of formative assessment. Students need to be able to see where they're at in relation to the target, and I am there to help them know where they need to go in order to meet that standard. So there's my eager students, and they loved it. This was an interactive way for them to assess their own learning, to see where they were at, and it was also a way for me to collect data and change my instruction for the better. And this is just one of many different technology tools that are available to teachers and students alike where they can formatively assess and be a part of the process, which will drive further instruction. Thank you.
Next is Jen. I'll let her introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Jen Wolfe. I'm an eighth-grade language arts teacher at Hubble Middle School, and I'm kind of going the low-tech, yet tech-infused route here with a project that I call iSearch. So iSearch is, it is independent, self-directed, inquiry-based research where students ask a burning question, as you can see, about something that they've always been curious about, something that they can't be an expert in field in. It can't be a person, it can't be a sports team. It has to actually be something that they can create some really specific questions and inform their peers about down the road. It is quite a process, as you can see up here, and it fits every facet of the FIT model. So students begin by selecting a topic of their choice, and I'll show you some of the topics. But literally, we've had everything from Tucker automobile creation to schizophrenia to FBI agent training. So anything under the sun that students are interested in. Then they create guiding research questions that really work them through the entire process. These are the questions that they'll eventually present at the end. They use these to craft an essay. So it's pretty multifaceted. They use both print and digital resources to investigate. So we do use quite a bit of technology within the research process as well. And then they have to interview an expert, which I find honestly, one of the best parts of the whole project. I had a student interview a neurologist from England, a flight attendant with an EL student who barely spoke the language, and she was so excited that she was able to do that piece of the project. You name it, we've done it. So it's been pretty interesting. Then students create a 10, a seven to 10-minute speech, and they write an explanatory essay. And then for me, they turn in basically a portfolio of all of the work that they've done. So I'll leave these if you want to look through those. And I also have to say, I would love for some of you to come over and watch these when we do them. They'll be at the end of fourth quarter, but I would love for anybody to come in because the kids do an incredible job. So I share a little bit about the topics, but kids basically just become immersed in something that's meaningful to them. And then they end up sharing with everyone what they've learned and their knowledge. And students in the class provide feedback using a program called Padlet, which is basically a digital bulletin board that they can offer responses for their peers. So then, I really didn't put this up as a pad on my own back. I put it up because I've had so many students write back to me. And the thing that I think is amazing about this is because two students, of course, one of them said, hey, well, do. I love iSearch. That's an I-level student. I have a couple A-level students, and my favorite one is actually from a specialized student up here. All of these different levels wrote back and said, wow, this was a meaningful project. Some of them say, wow, that was a ton of work. And when they come back to visit me, sometimes it's embarrassing because I can't remember their name, but I remember their project. So it's something that I'll continue to do. Again, I would love it if any of you could come and visit.
Thanks so much. Jason, you're up.
Hi, I'm Jason Nawazak. I'm leading Warrenville South Tech Integration Coordinator. This year at South, we're trying something new. Being the Tech Integration Coordinator, it does a lot to talk about how teachers can incorporate technology, but it really means more when you see it in action. So I'm a social studies teacher by trade. So what we did this year at South was, I'm co-teaching a section of U.S. history. And what we're doing is, we've flipped our classroom. Now, flipping has been all the rage the last couple of years, but it was really more so to free up time during the school day to really dive deep into FIT. And I'll show you what I mean by that in just a second. So what's different about this class? So there's very little in-class direct instruction. Rather, knowledge and creation is student-centered. So what I want students to do is discover the knowledge themselves, not have me sit in front of the room like sometimes you might see in a social studies class and just give them information, right? And instead, students go home and they take their content with them via video. And most of those videos are under eight minutes because we know that if we have students go home watching 30-minute videos, they're not going to pay attention, and you're not going to get any results. I also say that there's little to no standardized summative multiple-choice tests because I'm thinking, I don't want to raise trivia experts. I want to raise knowledge creation experts. And so why? Why do we do this? Sometimes when I, when I, when people hear about what we're doing at South, they're like, oh, you're the flip class, right? Well, yes, we are, but that's really only the method, not the goal. The real reason why we're doing it is because of the more in-class time. That gives us so much more opportunity to try new things, to have teachers come in and see what we're doing. So now that the content piece is moved outside the classroom, there's so much more time inside the classroom to go ahead and dive deeper into FIT, okay? And most of the ways that we go ahead and assess students is through mini-projects. And we think mini-projects are a better way to showcase higher-order thinking skills and contextualize learning, which is pretty big in our FIT goals as well. So then, basically, what does the day-to-day look like in class time? So we have about 16 Chromebooks in the classroom at all times. So, you know, later we're going to talk about, you know, universal access. We kind of feel that a half-class set is probably the minimum that we think that we can go to, to consistently infuse technology. Anything less than that, it does get kind of hard to have four kids or anyone Chromebook, right? But in-class time really involves activities that focus on knowledge construction, collaboration, creation, higher-order, and it's got getting kids up and doing things. And one of the things that we just also went through is Kagan's Cooperative Learning Strategies. So that's been amazing now to combine those structures that we learned through our Kagan training, tech integration, but now there's so much more time to explore doing different kind of, you know, collaborative structures. So in summary, it's really just a way now that we have a testing ground to try new things, to have teachers come in and see them give you practice instead of just talking about them. So.
Thanks so much. It's so great to actually have the teachers here to be able to talk about the great things that they're doing. So I really appreciate the time that you've put in. So you may be asking, what's helping with FIT implementation? And the FIT group decided that we better get out there and get a survey out to everybody and try to figure out what's causing some of the magic that we're seeing in some of the classrooms. So we have sent out a survey. We don't have it back from every single school. We still have seven schools that have yet to do this. And we asked them a lot of things. We asked them of all the 12 or 13 items that were listed. What are the top three that are really helping you get better at implementing FIT? And 53% of the staff so far have said that PLCs are in the top three. And I kind of was like, what? How can that, you know, like just being in the PLCs? But there's, like, if one PLC member goes to see a leak, and one PLC member sees another classroom, or one PLC, then they get together and like, how are you doing this? And they have an opportunity to share and actually see how that works. There's not a lack of ideas. In fact, it's overwhelming to be a teacher and you Google how to do something or a new idea, and all of a sudden you have 42 different videos and ideas about what to do. So the PLCs are really helping. What if you filtered out that actually works with our kids? And then they can share that. And then 40% say the building-based of trainings, and some of that is experts in-house. And I'm sure Jason has done quite a few over at South. And then 30% of that long list say in the top three are really district trainings that we've provided. Some other things that come close is when they just do self-investigation and they look for resources on their own to be able to do this. So now, look at this screen for a little bit because I want to try to really hit on the difference between traditional exercises and FIT. So what I've just done for you is a very traditional presentation. Learning target for you guys, identify key components of FIT and how FIT has been supported in District 200. The skills that you needed were pretty much listening comprehension, maybe summarization. Assessment for that, I could give you a multiple-choice test, could get a little more involved, give you an essay, maybe have a discussion. Why don't you do this for a FIT classroom? Ready for this, learning target? Think about it. This is your assignment. Learners will work in small groups to design a commercial, a newscast, or an animated slideshow that explains or endorses FIT to one of these audiences: board members, parents, legislators, new teachers, students. Think about the skills that you need to get that done. The assessment, multiple-choice, not going to work on that. It's going to need to be performance-based, differentiate, and the focus is on the process. Two or three years from now, I don't really care if you can't remember the exact things of FIT. You can look on the website. It'll still be there. The goal is, do you have enough skills that you can put all that information together and be able to use it to explain it to other people or to persuade them to your way of thinking? That's the difference. All right. So now, think of your assignment that you need to do this with 26 students. They need to design a commercial or create a presentation. They're thinking about, do they want to talk to board members? Do they want to talk to legislators? Where are they going with this? When I gave you that assignment just now, did you think you were running out getting poster boards in your own minds when you were going to create this, right? You started thinking about devices, what you would create. Now imagine you're a Generation Z kid. They're not thinking about poster boards. Now we're going to think about what's the right number of devices. I heard Jason talk a little bit like, oh, because it is group work. There are many times that I need one to one. There are many times where you put the devices away, you need to listen to them, right? So you have to get that right balance. Now think about, if you're the teacher, you've given off this great assignment, you've got a people-parenting group, and they're all excited, they're working on it at night. I have two students in my class that don't have access to the internet at home. Or they don't have a device that they have a whole lot of use and access for. The ability to participate in this type of a learning environment without having that free, constant access to information is greatly reduced. Here's what it kind of looks like. We also asked our FIT, all the schools, to take this survey, and we want to keep monitoring to see if we have the right number of devices. Right now, 67% of our staff report the lack of devices is an obstacle to implementing FIT, and that's at school. 33% stated it's not an obstacle. So we're making some progress there, but we have a big need. And I want to remind you that need is to getting access to that learning environment. It's not access to a device. They need to have access to people to be able to create with. Think about being a teenager right now and not being able to text or interact with other people. Also, they need access to information anytime, anywhere. My kids at home, they're constantly like, huh, I want to find out about koalas. I want to find out about, you know, and they're on their phones and they're finding out information. We need to make sure that all of our students have access to that information. So we've got to have internet devices, and it means we have to do it at school and also away from school. Recently, we had a really exciting breakfast where we partnered with lots of business owners and other people throughout the different communities that we serve. And there was some real excitement in the room about creating spaces and identifying businesses that would allow people to come in and look at that, also exploring ways to fund hotspots so that when we send home devices, we can have, make sure that they have access. Because it's one thing, we get a whole bunch of Chromebooks. We send them home with high school students. If they don't have access to internet, those Chromebooks aren't going to be very valuable. So we generated some interest there. There was definitely interest in partnering with us to be able to continue this work. I know you're going to ask me, how many devices are needed? I have the right amount in quotes, and here's why. As more teachers begin to use FIT and are doing that, I think we're wanting to see an increase in the need for more devices. So what's right right now, may not be right a year from now. We also are just now beginning to do student checkout of devices at middle school and high school, and we don't yet know how many people are saying, yes, I need a device to go home. And we have a lot of devices that are going home. We're not anticipating that we're going to have those students, bring them back every single day and come back and check in, check out. They need to have that device on a regular basis. So as those devices go out, they won't be available for instruction during the day. And we have to predict what that need is. And as more classrooms do more of the great things that you just heard about, there will be more students needing to check out devices. So we're going to have to continually keep our pulse on that to see where we're now. So here's where we landed for now. We want to have enough, so every school with their largest grade level group could do a project at a time. Thinking about science standards, I'm getting ready to train all the elementary teachers. Okay, fifth grade, what if you needed to have an individual project and everybody needed a promo? I want them to have the ability to do that. Doesn't mean that they're going to need them all day, every day in school year. They can then travel to fourth grade. They can go to third grade. They can divide them up. At the middle school, so if you think K1, 2, 3, 4, 5, not as many devices per student as we go to middle school where you've only got three grade levels. And now we're saying, okay, we want one whole grade level to be able to do that project at a time, plus five per classroom. And we also need some checkout at middle school and high school. So at the high school level, where we've been a little bit behind on this number of devices compared to the middle school, we're now looking at, oh, having an entire grade level at the high school. So if all freshmen or all sophomores, I don't think they'll do it much that way. But we thought about the ratio that would be needed to be able to check out by department, by course, what that would look like. The buildings are now in a really difficult time trying to figure out how to manage and organize all of that checkout to maximize it so that everybody has the device that they need when they need it. That's going to take a little time. We've got buildings trying out different things. As they get more and more devices, we're going to have to continue that conversation. Because people are getting pretty creative and finding some great ways to do that. But I do want to remind you, the devices are not enough. If you go back to this, in my very traditional approach, I use technology to make, right, I have a microphone, I've got projector going. I could give you all promos and you could write essays. I could have you collaborate on Google Docs. But I didn't really do anything that I couldn't have done with pencil and paper and posters. The real magic is to get to this type of work because knowledge is not enough. It's what you can do with it that counts. And the device is not enough. It's what our teachers can do, instruction with those devices that's going to matter. Okay, questions? I do need to let you know that Brad is going to talk a little bit more about the technology plan. So this isn't questions for the whole evening. This is questions just for I.
I have a quick question. So we're moving away from more of a standardized testing type of atmosphere. So how do we see now FIT impacting things like local assessments, finals, things like that?
Sure. So on our local assessments, there are a lot of multiple choice types of things. And our kids are still going to have to take multiple choice tests all the time. And those are key skills that we still need to have. And you still need to read a passage, be able to, you know, identify and summarize by a multiple choice piece. The math piece, they still need to be able to do that. But in addition, they need to do that. So it's not getting rid of those traditional assessments. However, we did make sure that the district assessments are really small because we don't want to spend a huge amount of time. There are a lot of districts that spend a lot of time doing those more traditional tests. And we don't want to do that because we want to free up time to be able to do these types of things. Our kids are still going to have to take college entrance exams that are multiple choice. They're still going to have to improve their knowledge in that way. But as we know, when you do an interview for a job, you don't do that on multiple choice. You have to be able to speak. You have to be able to write. So we have to make sure that our students are equipped to do both. Does that help?
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. And just to share a little feedback as a parent, you know, I have a freshman this year who last year we had to have goals that she actually went up and spoke to a teacher. And it was very difficult for her to do that. And now she comes home and all I hear about is school and everything that she does because it's such a collaborative environment now because there is so much FIT that's being used within the classroom. I have a completely different child now in terms of a love for learning that she didn't have before because of all the collaboration. So I just want to share that.
Chris, I appreciate so much hearing the enthusiasm our teachers have for the FIT program. For some of us who are coming from the dinosaur age and had kids who had group projects in high school and just hated them because there was always one or two students who were not pulling the bore on it. So everybody else had to make up for it. How do we address that? And secondly, how do we address the fact that in doing these assessments, in doing collaboration in the classroom as we're promoting right now, kids are going to know how other kids are performing. And there are going to be some kids who are not performing as well as other kids. And so how do we, how do we make sure that kids aren't getting stigmatized? I know if I'm making myself scary. So those are two questions.
Okay, I might address the first one first because we were worried about that. And I have some people in the room that were here when we originally wrote this. And the second bullet up here says, group time requires meaningful contributions from all as well as individual accountability. When we're talking about giving report card grades and being able to do that, you can't be like, and everybody in the group got the same grade. You still need to be able to summarize that and write about the process, write about, you know, what you did. The great thing about Google Docs is you can tell who wrote what, even though it's a typed document. There needs, and this is tricky, you've asked a really great question because we have this whole big group project. We want them to be working together, but you don't want, well, we have one person in the room who did it all and somebody else just slipped by. So we still need to have some assessments at the end of that or have them write about what that was. Or during a performance phase, they've each got to get up and talk about the process that they use because we don't want to get in the habit of giving group grades. Because they need, we need to know, like, if I gave you this full assignment as group work, I still need to design an assessment that I can say, yes, who are you able to do this on your own? You're able to do this on your own. You're able to do this on your own. Our report cards for the elementary school, they're aligned by standards and they have to know how each student did. You don't get a group grade so that you mastered that standard. And we're working on that. Just another middle school comes to us today about grading. And the high schools are working on that as well. So that's going to answer the first question. Your second question was about, well, everybody's going to know how they do. Yes, students are going to know who speaks well in class. They figure that out already. I'll answer the question. I'll answer the question from the lecture and those types of things. With writing, you want students to be able to share writing and is it going to demonstrate who's a great writer and who's not? Yes. The great thing about FIT is it also allows you to design a visual or a video that goes with that to prove your knowledge about your ability to communicate. So even if you're not the best writer, there will be another way for you to do that. Where a more traditional assessment, everybody gets matched by the exact same thing. And they figure out who's the great mathematician in the room and who's not. This allows for some more differentiation on how you would show your mastery of that. You're right that students are going to, as they collaborate. I do a lot of structured math talk where, okay, now you've got to explain fractions to someone else. You've got to use all these terms. Yep, is the person in the room, you know, who's really good at that going to show? Absolutely. But it becomes more of a group work of, you explain it to me, then I'll explain it back. And it's not competition-based because it is a ranking of, you know, you have a 90%, and I got a 97%. We're all working to understand fractions.
Okay, I'll go. From the moment I got on this floor, this is the most exciting thing we've been doing. I love this. It's driving so much heart conversation that I've seen in the last three, four years. If you look at the collaboration and creation element of the FIT guide, if you think about what we're doing, the Facility Master Plan, if you hear the word collaboration and maker space and what the new library looks like, this FIT plan is feeding the conversation in our Facility Master Plan, which then is all about learning. That's what I really love about this document. It's easy to think technology devices, but actually the word technology device isn't even on this FIT guide. This is all about learning.
It's just a tool.
It's all about learning. So I would actually love to celebrate this even more and more and more to our community because I think this is the most important thing we're doing. I was actually in a workshop today with other school districts talking about 21st century teaching and learning. And one of the things that one of the teachers said was, the most important thing they do, this is a K through eight district, the most important thing they do is to let their students be in charge of their own learning. And that, when I was listening to the iSearch comment, I mean, that's what that was. That's what makes kids energized and excited and happy in school, when they can own their own learning. So I would love to, like I said, from a PR standpoint, celebrate this more, promote it more. So I guess my question is, what can we do as a board to make it even better and put more fuel in the engine besides four devices?
Well, I kind of have an answer that we like, are you going to talk about? Right, so we came really close to designing a commercial for you tonight. But I decided it would be better to pose that as a possible assignment in existence other than that we do it. We're kind of excited about having some principals or having people talk about that and have some, do something like this, either with the FIT or to put together some commercials that could be used with the community or even back to staff highlighting some of the things that we do. So we came close to having that for tonight, but we went with live discussions.
So one follow-up question is, when was this created, the FIT guide?
Ah, the FIT guide.
And then the follow-up question is, how many more years until we get to recreate and update it?
April of 2014. 2014. And we spent, I mean, it looks all nice and simple. We spent a lot of time, a lot of time for those people that were on the committee. And we didn't just sit down from scratch. We looked at outside organizations. We looked at best practices. We've looked at technology and instructional behaviors and standards. And we really tried to make this, you know, a one page, but look toward the future of what we wanted to be, given the future that our students are. So it was finalized and it was kind of issued by January, February. But we didn't get it out there and have it approved to the principals and everybody until, thanks for the assist. I couldn't remember March or April.
So this is two years old?
It is.
So then, I guess my question is, how far do we get into being comfortable with it before we challenge ourselves to update it?
Well, if you want a little taste of where we're going for next year, when we talk about universal access, we're going to be talking about time and location. Next year, that part's going to be highlighted. And then with all the work that we're doing around science, we are going to be looking at contextualized learning piece. But I don't go through a day without having a conversation about differentiation and personalization and visualization too. So there's a lot of all of that that's going on. Knowledge construction, just from the teachers that were here tonight, you saw a lot about that. So we're nowhere near comfortable. Like, I'm like, oh yeah, we're all, we can be with collaboration operation. No, I'm not sure that we'll ever be it where I can say, yes, we're 100% everywhere all the time. Haven't thought about, do we want to go back and redo? Because I don't think that I'm seeing any signs that this is outdated yet. We'll get new tools and get new ways to do this better. But I see this as being a longer range than, okay, two years when we're done.
And maybe the purpose of my question wasn't to get a date. That's much as to, you know, like the seeds that this is evolving document and that should be, you know, continue to be informed by what we're doing in the classroom. And then the other thing, and I, we kind of had a conversation about this at the community engagement meeting, is that, you know, one of the things that is frustrating with me is you read all these articles and, oh, you know, the success of every school district is what you score on one test score. How many percentage of kids make it above a certain line and that's how good of a school you are. So much of what's in here is not about what we do on the ACT or work or such. And so I'm very interested in how do we use this to help, you know, convey that our kids are learning skills and learning how to use information to better prepare themselves for college and career. In fact, you know, there's a school district locally here that's actually launched a whole new initiative. District 24, yeah, we talked about this. And I'm really interested in, it's called redefining readiness. It's a whole national initiative, I think related with AASN about, you know, how do we redefine the fact that what a student scores on a test isn't defining whether they're ready for college or career. But there's a whole other set of skills, a lot of what's in here that really equally affect more importance. So I would love to see that become part of our conversation going forward too.
It's a good point. If you dig though, as it comes out, if you dig deeper into that document out of 214 that talks about redefining readiness, what you're actually going to start to see are a lot of the elements that are on your dashboard as a board. So it's not just a test score. It's attendance. It's participation in activity and an activity of more than one. It's challenging yourself with a rigorous course sequence through high school that connects to your AP goal. So there are some other elements that I think we can move to. But I think the good news is, I think you've begun to do that as a board. Your dashboard certainly has that metric on there of ACT, not going to get away from it. But, you know, I think you've balanced that. And actually, in the Teaching and Learning Committee, when we met, it was a couple of weeks ago, that was one of the things that we talked about was, how does FIT, how can we work that into the dashboard? It's not, you can't just still fit down to a metric that you can easily put on a dashboard. But on your board dashboard, you do have items like monitoring social emotional learning, you know, plan or strategy. And so I think just simply making sure that FIT is in that language of monitoring, well, you can't just, it's not an easy metric, I think is one of the things. And can I come back to one other thing you'd asked specifically, what's the board going to do? So I think the board obviously has had a goal around FIT. I think now that the action items that are going to come as a result of that board around FIT, recognize now are going to come in different pieces. We're going to have a conversation in a little bit about a master technology plan and how does that support it. You're going to see at your next meeting a proposal that FIT is bringing around professional development and coaching and intervention. That ties directly to FIT. Later, at your April committee of the whole, you'll see a plan for professional development next year, continuing to do a lot of the work that Lee is doing, that our teachers are doing. That certainly is going to support FIT. So I think you're going to see it now when we get it back into SEL. Joanne and the SEL team have embedded the SEL metrics in this language around it. So I think you're going to now support it through, have supported implementation of those other key items that tie into it. Obviously, you already supported the change in science and new materials and those pieces, so.
Hey, I also think, you know, what was conquering to me in terms of, are we taking, you know, people may think we're taking too much away from, you know, our students being able to succeed on standardized tests, but, you know, we're focusing also on standards mastery. And I think, the last person you heard from? Is that Jason? I'm sorry. I should have left it open to your names. You know, I love the way you explained the flipped classroom where that direct instruction isn't happening in the classroom because the students are spending eight minutes. You know, instead of sitting and doing nothing, they're reading and then they're coming and they're being active. So they're still learning those essential facts that they will be tested on on a multiple choice test like the ACT or whatever the state decides to do to assess progress. So I don't think we're losing sight of that, but I think we're giving them much greater skills that they're going to need in the future. So I appreciate that.
Right, I think we need to have that little faith that if you work on, you know, these types of things, it solidifies those basic skills more so even than the traditional way. If you think about whatever I talked about tonight, FIT. Okay, if I had to write a little summary, okay, great. If I had to create a commercial about all of this, and we're working on all of that, you're probably going to remember components of FIT even more so. So it's not, oh, we don't want to get rid of, you know, we're not going to do that. It's finding ways to apply all of that to make it meaningful and to resonate and to still be in their brains and use for.
Chris, thank you very much. And before we end this, I want to highlight Leigh Cook here. She didn't get up to speak, but all members of board have heard nothing but the great work you're doing, Leigh, and how much we appreciate that. So I want to make sure that I give you a shout out on that. And on the flipped classroom, just a personal anecdote. Two, three weeks ago, the board was contacted by a junior at North who's voice scout and is working on citizenship and community badge. So he had a the citizenship and the community badge, so he had an interview with a elected official, and he wanted to talk about flipped classroom. So, to prepare for that, I went online and learned all I could about flipped classroom so I wouldn't be a dummy when I met with him, and he was excited about it, he was going through a physics class at Wheat North, and he did admit that some of his fellow students were kind of being challenged, why they weren't sure about it, which is understandable, it's a new concept we're implementing, by and large, he was pleased with it, so I was glad to hear that. So, thanks for your time.
I, I just had one final comment that I think might be a nice transition to the next topic, but you can say anything about enough, enough devices for the largest grade level of each school. I guess I'm, I'm not convinced we don't need a lot more than that at the high school level. It seems to me like, you know, half, what's, six hundred and some odd devices in a high school, twenty five cases might be.
Plus five in every classroom.
Right.
Yeah, a hundred and twenty classrooms, about, just, I mean, just so you're thinking it's only the classroom.
Yeah, I guess it ties back to the tech, the comment I made, if I recall correctly, the tech comment last year, we talked about moving towards a ratio, and, you know, a ratio at the kindergarten level is different than a ratio at the high school senior. You know, I'm not sure of that, I'll be more discussion to see if that, that comment is really sufficient in the high school.
And I'm sorry, there was another question that came to mind just?
Sure.
Are we getting any parental pushback from flipping the classroom? Nothing?
None that admitted to my office, there is the, ah, okay, well, why are they having to do that video piece at home, you know, I'm not seeing them write and I'm not seeing them collect, because that's, that, some of that is happening, but it's kind of to your point, you don't know who did the homework assignment if it happens there. You know, they may have the individual, but, you know, doing some of that work and having it being done right there at school, and then being able to get a better feel for what the students are actually able to do. So, some more questions about it, but not questions.
I'm, I'm just curious, 'cause I'm, I'll never forget when my son's junior English teacher made him, made him assign the class to go rent a movie, which of course, all the super achievers had checked out all the movies, you know, so we had to go to, I don't know, we had to Bollinger or something to rent this movie, and he had to, you know, watch the movie all in his own time and then be prepared, and I was like, wait a minute, you know, what's going on here, why do we have to, you know, do this? And, and so I was wondering if there was any kind of, you know, pushback from that perspective.
Yeah, the different thing is with the device, is if they have that, I know they don't have to drive to Bollinger, it's right there, you guys can, you know, go. Right, that helps.
Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, we're gonna transition, I think with, with that segue into the master technology plan, and Rob is gonna, gonna start with this discussion.
This is really loud, it's muffling me. Thanks, Dr. Schuler. Master Tech Plan, two of the accomplishments we have from last year was the first time we looked at the Master Tech Plan and this, this design with the five categories across the top that we're gonna go over, but these were the, the big topics of last year that were on there, I wanted to just refresh what we went through. We did refresh the high school wireless, that was changing out the access points and adding density to the rooms that didn't have them, with the access points that have more throughput and can get more devices on them. One of the benefits of doing that is the access points that we took down were enough to build density in the third, fourth, and fifth grade classrooms and hallways at all the elementary schools. We added about twelve hundred Chromebooks last year, currently the total of just Chromebooks is around twenty-six hundred devices, we have about two thousand desktops and sixteen hundred laptops out there as well, as we talked about, devices for students. We did the elementary copier printer solution that we approved in October, and we also did the elementary refresh, where instead of replacing all their desktops at their fourth year at the end of their lease, we held onto, you know, a certain number at each of the schools, pulled a lot of them out, or buying them out actually at the next board meeting finally, and replaced them, and were able to handle all the certified staff laptops with docking stations that really kind of changed, you know, finally gave them a device that they could take back and forth and worked in any room, no matter what the connection was. You've probably been in a lot of rooms to know, yes, we have projection, we have sound, we have all those in every room, but they're all different, the laptop works, no matter where you snap it, they don't need to know what model it is, what it's gonna look like, it just, it just kind of works, so we had a pretty busy year. Looking at this master tech plan, again, looking at the five pillars and really trying to identify last year, what are things that we can, kind of like, the other documents we use in the district are kind of more fluid now. When we first started a few years ago, we were behind, we kind of picked the things that we needed to. Now we're at the point where we really can just support the learning, support the FIT environment, be able to work on, making sure that those five pillars are always behind what we're doing in the goal, so that we're not chasing and we ever get to a point where we're, okay, we need to rip and replace everything again. Everything is being refreshed now, the access points were an easy, take one down, put one up, we didn't have to repull because of all the groundwork we had done the years before. But with the master tech plan, the way it's written now, it really helps prioritize our needs, we're not looking at things we need to be doing, it supports the resources across the district, it really does help us with the professional development from our side when new devices come in, how we help the elementary staff, how we'll help the middle and high school staff next year with what they need, how we can help support the FIT. It allows everyone to look at and see the guide in one page again, and see what things we're working on this year and what we're looking at in the next year. It's always like a two-year fluid device. But I think the biggest benefit of the way it is now is, it's not a plan from technology, it really is a support plan for everything we're trying to do in FIT, trying to reach universal access, making sure we have the network, the support systems, all those kinds of things in place. So it really kind of puts us back to where we should be, which is in a very support hole to do everything else the district needs to do. This is very small, I made another copy in here, it's an individual one, not that we're gonna read this, but this is the current master tech plan, the way it is, with the current year, and then kind of what we're looking at against seventeen eighteen. You know, again, the five pillars are there, it kind of models a little bit after the Horizon Report, if you've ever seen that, it comes out and says what people should always be looking at, two years down the road, five and ten, we're not looking five and ten, we're looking every two years and then a little beyond, we'll start to add some of the beyond years after seventeen eighteen as we start to get to next year, so that we're always laying the groundwork for what changes might be happening in a year or two. Technology changes too fast, we can't lay out a five-year plan, because in two years, the newest device could come out, like the Chromebook came out three years ago, it could change everything, we need to be ready for those changes. One of, the first pillar on there that we look at is the infrastructure and access, again, this is our ability to be able to support with the network. This coming year, we're doing the middle school refresh of access points, this again is under a big E-rate push this year, last year, E-rate for the high school, they're actually, we were able to get some funding to help pay for the access points, so that will replace the access points at the middle schools, similar to the ones at the high schools now, which again, allow more throughput or more internet bandwidth through them, and allow more devices to attach to it, so when students bring their own devices, it's not kicking off a supply Chromebook that we might have there. We're looking at increasing the internet bandwidth from three, from one to three gigabytes, we currently have a one gigabyte connection, we're going to add a two gigabyte connection that will eliminate outages because it's going to be at Hubble. Hubble and us are connected on a large connection, we'll have a secondary site like all of our main servers, we also have a secondary at Hubble, if anything ever happens, I'm gonna knock on a wood now, we've never lost the internet yet, but if anything ever happened in the internet connection here, everything would fail over to the other sites, if anything happened there, it would fail over here. Decreasing cost of internet bandwidth, just like everything else has come down towards, it's almost a cost neutral this year with the E-rate push. The other thing we're looking at doing is we do need to upgrade firewalls, adding a new internet drop, we need a new firewall at Hubble which we do not have, and we're duplicating a new one here, mainly because we're adding a lot of devices with this plan, we're also adding a lot of internet bandwidth and all of that is more processing speed. You know, we don't wanna slow internet because it's going through a firewall that can't handle that many devices or that much internet speed. It also helps us a little bit with security and the denial of service, I don't know if anyone heard that from a few years ago when St. Charles was hit with the denial of service, that's where they can saturate your internet, and they ended up finding out it was two kids in the school doing it for themselves, but it stops those, the new firewalls have that technology denial of service or something that wasn't a big thing a year or so ago, now it's, it's kind of becoming that way. The second pillar, which is the one we've talked about, is universal access. Universal access devices is for both staff and students, so for universal access to be fully implemented next year, we do have to give staff devices at the middle and high school level, that will be replacing their classroom desktops with laptops for all certified staff, placing docking stations in there. A part of this universal access is getting rid of sixteen hundred laptops, those are going into their fourth and fifth year next year, those are the ones we approved a few years ago. Batteries aren't lasting on those, we just need to kind of switch those out, so that's replacing those with Chromebooks, that's sixteen hundred. And then to meet the universal requirement of, one for the largest grade level, and the five in every room across the district, as an additional thirty-one hundred, or a total purchase of about four thousand seven hundred Chromebooks this year, on top of the two thousand six hundred fifty we already have. We're also, again, Fay talked about, we met with the Chamber, the community talked about ways that they could help us support wireless out there in the district, not just in the buildings but everywhere, buildings putting up Wi-Fi, we've offered our services to help them, if they need, you know, a lot of them might have a smaller type of, and they don't know about security, our guys can go in, that's something that'll benefit us, for us, to give them an hour or so to help them set up their Wi-Fi so they can open it, maybe have a shared SSID so the whole community sees, I can't remember what I called it, S something learning, support learning, what was it? Support for learning, yeah, they all had an SSID, remember, if you're walking with your iPhone and you see a Wi-Fi signal that the SSID and you're familiar with it, you know, hey, that's the one that the whole community is supporting, it's kind of a neat idea, we're one of the first communities to do that. Also looking at taking home devices and having, you know, little tiny MiFi hotspots that we go home and check out with the Chromebooks as well. We've looked at, we have applied for a Sprint grant that would pay for the service for four years, if we buy the devices, haven't found out if we've received that yet, we're also looking at a T-Mobile solution, which is a few dollars a month, possibly getting community support maybe to help fund some of those from the schools, so as the students who do need access as well as a device at home, they check out both from the library and take it home and they have that internet access. The other part was classroom needs for instruction, this was something we finished last year, all building, all classrooms, instructional areas are outfitted with some type of projection device, whether it be a projector and a screen, a projector and a smartboard, a flat panel TV, as we added fifty of those last year. We also support the document camera, so if they have some type of a recording device, there's audio in all of those as well. Maybe not audio like you see here where it projects the teacher as they're teaching, the audio from the system is working, and we'll continue to replace document cameras, this is something that for a long time, PTAs, as you know, were often supported a lot of these purchases, we are now taking those over and keeping them at a rate, so we have a refresh rate of, that model is still, will still be, will not replace that, will replace the bulb, but older ones like those, as they start to fail, we're not putting enough of a burden on the school to say, you've gotta buy the new unit, we're buying the new unit and taking the older model down, those older models don't last as long, the bulbs blow three times faster than they do in a newer unit, so we have a refresh plan to keep all the classroom devices and things that they need to instruct or present working in functional order. Our operational technology systems, this is kind of the software in the backend stuff that we have, right now, the thing we're looking at is building a redundant backup for our human resource business financial solution, don't think we don't have one now, it's just, it's just a little bit of a quicker one, we're actually gonna get a secondary unit, so in case there is a failure ever, we had two short outages in the last two years, when a fan broke and something, because there's only the one hardware device, we're gonna get a second one and build it so that if it ever does fail, we can turn the other one on without having to wait for service to come out, there's a four-hour turnaround, but sometimes that four-hour can be crucial. It really does, we have a take-backup of all of these, it just kind of gives us that a little bit quicker where we can say, nothing, we'll be down, we really wanna make sure everything is always up and running without having to stop people, you know, from doing purchase orders or stop, forbid a payroll session as it's going now, there's only one hardware device that runs on now, and sometimes that four-hour turnaround might not be good. Prices have come down, and we can now build one of those and have it ready to go, just by hot switch, turn it on, plug the cables into it, and it would be running the backup in a constant sync, so. The other thing we're looking at is the second part of the middle school, high school copier refresh, that's more their printer solution, those smaller units we talked about in October, not the big fleet copiers, but the smaller units, replacing all of the, you know, expensive printers we have out there. Since doing the elementary version, I think we've retired almost twenty-seven printers, and we didn't go in and steal them in the middle of the night, we waited until they actually told us, yes, it ran out of toner, and when I say I'm not buying your toner, they let us take the device. So it has worked, we, we only have a few that were changed somewhere, Bill's, I'm kidding, it's not Bill's office. But it has worked really well, so it's, that next phase of that at the middle school and high school, again, if you remember, there's a big energy cost and stuff that we start to save as we start to remove those printers that are sitting on the system all the time, and save paper costs, so that is a part of this next year's plan. The last part up there is the one that we, you know, talked about kind of a little bit more in the previous years, where some of the, the support systems and how we could, we used to call reliability and stability. I just put two charts that we've seen before, there used to be, I used to share quite a few more, but just a few to kind of look at the trends, the top left one is just tickets open per month, that looks at the last five years, and you can see the green line was the, you know, twenty twelve, you can see it as the year goes, we, every year we're getting less and less tickets in the system, and I don't think that's all on tech, I do think it's because we've got some better systems in there, but I also think some of the PD and the professional development we're doing out there, the trainings we're giving teachers, there's not as much things that we're chasing technology-wise, the things we're going out there fixing are probably things that need to be fixed. You can look at this past August, the big chunk in blue, it's probably because we did look, almost forty percent of those August tickets were the elementary staff with their new laptops, it was a new thing this year, we'll probably, we always have a high August, but we didn't have a decrease in August from the yellow and the red line. The other thing that we really kind of stabilized on, this is something that we put into place, started tracking at the end of twenty thirteen, or end of twenty twelve, is, so the first full year we had was twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, is the average open time for tickets, and if you remember, I think that at one point it was fifty-three hours after that first year when I presented, again, this is on a twenty-four hour clock, it takes us fifty-three hours. We've kind of stabilized to where we're at that thirty-hour threshold when, as tickets come in and close, and again, that's on a twenty-four hour, if someone puts a ticket in at five o'clock on a Friday, it's counting all the way until Monday morning we get there, so the thirty hours, kind of, it's kind of plateaued out, and we, we really work to maintain that, that we have a, a very fast turnaround on how long tickets remain open in our system. We do have a few that, that go out for a little bit longer, a period of time, mainly because some things we can't fix right away, some things are something someone new wants to implement, it might not work in our system, we leave those tickets open and they count against us until we can find a solution that will work for some people, but we, sometimes we'll have a few tickets that will go a month because it's something new and we don't have the manpower to look at it when we can fix the quick ones, but we leave those up there because we think it's a more honest representation of how long these tickets can take. So looking at this plan and the things we just talked about going through, you know, the biggest one being universal access, funds needed to compete this plan this year is roughly nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the technology budget, and again, with expiring leases coming off, a few service agreements and things that we have for different systems with the new firewalls coming in, and then funds available from the refresh of other access, things that we did in the previous years, one-time funds, it's a little bit cheaper this year, we have eight hundred and eight available, so, and this year we're looking at, in addition to the tech budget for one-time funds of a hundred and seventy-two thousand to get all this done. If you remember from last year, I think the Title I grant paid for about a hundred and sixty-eight or a hundred and sixty-nine thousand of the Chromebooks, so it's, again, there's to get everything we want to get done, and to get to universal access here, we're looking for a hundred and seventy-two thousand increase of the tech budget. Right now, the total tech budget is two point four million, one nice thing to offset that one seventy-two is, we really don't count the revenue within the tech budget, it goes into the revenue side, but we could see potential E-rate revenue this year, just from the projects that are listed up here, not our normal internet service and all of that, of a hundred and sixteen thousand, so, I'm not gonna say it's a dollar-for-dollar trade-off, but there is, we'll have a little increase this year to cover everything we need to be covered. That's the fastest I've ever noticed.
Somebody give you a time limit?
No, no, he didn't. Any questions?
Yes, I've never heard a time.
Come on, I talk really fast.
Can you just explain a little more that community-supported internet idea, just, I'm trying to picture it in my head and...
Yeah, sure, well, I mean, it kind of came up, we joked around about, there's a couple of communities in rural areas who own the school buses and they put hotspots or access points in the school buses and park the school buses in apartment complexes, it got us talking about, how are we going to get, not knowing exactly what that number is out there, and instead of just focusing on our apartment complexes, which we are trying to make sure that some of them that we can work with, either some company to bring in, you know, wireless, either at their, you know, their center, their main hub, not, we're not giving every apartment wireless, but something that they can go to and that's close within walking distance, we kind of thought, well, let's reach out, there's Starbucks, there's a lot of places kids go and hang out, can we look at it and maybe brand it and work with these people? We talked about using a logo that says, "I support learning," you know, so as kids start to walk around the community, they would see on all the stores that have an open Wi-Fi forum, "I support learning." Kind of then thought, and if we change, so that when their phone pops and says there's a, "I support learning Wi-Fi," it starts to become familiar, and not just for our students but for all, you know, all areas. We've had Wheaton, St. Francis was eager to look at this, Winfield was eager to look at this, we had some, the parochial schools who have kids, they're all like, we've had a couple of them call and say, hey, we'd like to find out what you're doing with this too. To us, it's, "I support learning" in Wheaton, no matter if they're our students or not. Really looking at what we can do, so we had community come in, we had a lot of people interested in, you know, ways they could help out, I think right now it's just, we're just hitting that ground running on what that might look like in a community. City of Wheaton was there, Park District, there's quite a few, so it's, in its infancy stages, but I think it could be, you know, a real nice solution for this area to be able to highlight, you know, fifty or sixty places to say, if you don't have it at home, you can go here, and if you're in an apartment complex and we can help support it there, and then us lending our support to some of, you know, some of the businesses might not, you know, they just have Wi-Fi, they bought it from Comcast, they don't know how to control it. If we go in and show them how to secure their stuff and open it up, it might, it might really benefit, you know, the community as a whole, so.
I've got a couple of questions. With this plan here and the projection of Chromebook refresh, what will our ratio be as far as the devices we're supplying our students?
You know, I...
Secondly, you mentioned the school bus and the Wi-Fi should, listen, there's a report in the paper either today or yesterday, featuring about some local school districts also play Wi-Fi in their buses so the kids could access, you know, in that two in front of school.
As an alternate in their bus, but...
I was trying to get builder, a little tweaky was his around. And your first question, the ratio, you know what, because we started talking universal access and it is something different, the ratio is definitely down, but I stopped the ratio documents when we, when we were looking at a, it's a little different number now. The ra, I can get the ratio for you, it is drastically down again when we're adding, you know, an increase of almost thirty-one hundred devices on top of the ones we added last year, but because we call it a universal access now and not trying to reduce that ratio, but I can get that ratio for everybody, that's not a problem, I can tell you what it will be after this year's purchase. I'll send that up to you.
You know, I thought you mentioned you're replacing some laptops with Chromebooks. Is there any loss of functionality there?
No, not really, and, part of that laptop thing, we're actually keeping, we'll still keep quite a few of them, that's this model here for substitutes, when they come in, they'll be in the building. We've talked a little bit about how those might be able to go back to community, working with the People's Resource Center, as we all knows when they're done, the batteries are not real good on them, so they, you know, they don't lose functionality, but there's still plenty of desktops and labs out there for the software. Most, what the people are doing is online, and you know, what Google has to offer in all the online sites, it really is, you know, more people are going to that. There will be, you know, up to sixteen hundred, it's not like we're taking them all away, not, we're, we're just not counting them in our use, and we're going to, we're going to find something instructive to do with a lot of them, whether it be help support those in our district who can't, clean them up and get them out there. There is a new product that actually converts all laptops into Chromebooks, which might help out, you know, we could do that and give them away, we're at the beginning stages of that too, but we want to make sure we're not taking some away that might be needed, so we'll be leaving, you know, twenty, thirty behind in each of the buildings probably just for the purpose of, if a teacher forgets theirs at home, they need something in their room, they have to have something there to, you know, if there's no desktop left in their room, it's just a box that plugs into the lights, but if there's nothing on it, so it's really reusing those in some way.
Regarding the internet and the apartments, I don't know anything about this, but when you go in hotels, sometimes they have the internet throughout the hotel. So if, the apartment building, if we somehow could talk them into it or find funding, so the whole apartment could have internet, is that feasible?
I, in their, maybe in their center where their apartment person works, the clubhouse area might, we're not, no, outfitting their entire building, they probably don't have access points in their entire buildings. That's not something apartment complexes would put in place.
So it's not...
I don't believe so, no, we would really, we're talking more about their clubhouse area, and again, talking about the laptops and some of the desktops going out, we can put two or three in their clubhouse area for a place for someone to walk down to and use, it's, we, you know, trying to help them in that way, it's ways other communities have done it, so those are the things with, with some of our refresh happening and we can hold on to some of those devices.
Rod, on the, Jim, to your, your question, unless I did my math wrong, it appears that we'll have seven thousand three hundred and fifty Chromebooks, so I figure, what, we have thirteen thousand students in the district, so it's basically one device for two kids, I mean, in the purest sense, so we're probably there, if we give you them up to meet your objectives, I think we're probably there at this point.
Right, yeah, we're definitely at a two, a two-to-one, but remember, we also still have all the labs out there that are counted in, that's because only students use those, and we do have quite a few number of iPads that we did not count in universal access, they're still highly used in some of the lower levels, but we did not count those in our, so there's, we're below it too, I know that, I just don't want to throw a number out there that I'm not real sure where it's at.
The other question I had, what kind of price do the Chromebooks cost these days? It sounds like you must have got a pretty good price of the books.
I do, no, yeah, it's a, yeah, we're still using, we still use the figure about two fifty, but it comes down because we have to buy Chrome Management on a newer Chromebook if we replace, the Chrome Management alone is twenty-five dollars, twenty-five thirty, we're getting them for around two eighteen right now, I think is the price code that we're getting, and the reason I'm using two fifty is, the Chrome devices in some cases are, a few of them are Chrome boxes for libraries, and we're also looking at getting some clever level Chromebooks that have touchscreen for some of the math areas, so the price point I use is two fifty, and that's about the average of a Chrome device if we were to look across it.
Yeah, I use three hundred and, now that, those sixteen hundred laptops, are they, we're not, we're not buying new Chromebooks, we're just using the monies from, is that that eight hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, you're right, some of that lease is coming off, so that money's going to fund the new lease that we'll use, and that lease will be docking stations, laptops, Chromebooks, it'll be, all, the whole plan will go, not just for one piece or the other. There's an increase of carts that will go in there as well.
Great, and just one final question, on the tickets open per month, why does, why the spike in January, do you think?
Everybody forgets their password. If you want my honest opinion, no, I probably shouldn't have said that out loud yet, no, it's, you know, every year they come back and we always get the email from Colin, unplug and turn everything off, and I'm not saying it's just we have to go plug things in, but when everything gets unplugged, sometimes not everything gets plugged in correctly, and a lot of it's just reconnecting things, and with only three or four guys that can't run every room and make sure everything got plugged in correctly, a lot of it is that, you're right, every year in January we get a spike too, and we're always ready for it, but trust me, February and March they kind of fly and out again, so.
Thank you.
I do want to say, one of the other things, Rod and I have had a lot of conversation on this, I think it's one of the great benefits of the Chromebook is that they really truly are man, are devices that are easy to manage, so when you look at that boost in the number of devices that are out there, we've not added support staff to Rod's department, those are, but those are really truly much easier to pass.
Yeah, they are, they are, yeah, by far, a lot easier for us to, and they don't break, I'm, I'm not kidding, they, and ten thousand things, we thought we were going to need fifty new people.
We don't want to see another person in the barrel, okay?
Thanks, Jeff.
Just one comment, when Jim and I ran for the board for the first time in February, March of two thousand and eleven, Barb was on the board, Tom, Tom was on the board, Tom, I remember coming into a board meeting when the first five-year technology plan was being put together and presented by Rod. We have come such a long way, far away, and it's been wonderful to see the progress that we've made in the last seven years. This is wonderful, thank you, Rod, thank, thank the entire staff for everything, it's really hard one to see.
I'm going to move off the device for a second. One thing on this plan that I'm wondering about is under the operational technology systems. I remember last year we talked about the HR business solution, people were already pretty archaic at the time, and I'm looking at this plan, saying in seventeen, eighteen, we're going to evaluate a new solution, does that mean in eighteen and nineteen, roughly three years from now, we'll get a new system in place, and I'm just wondering if it's possible to be evaluated next year and purchased in seventeen, eighteen?
Oh, sure, move the seventeen, eighteen up, yeah, we actually had to evaluate on, in this year, which isn't on this document, we're trying to keep it to two years, we did evaluate, we had talked about it, and then the priorities of everything, knowing that, you know, more worried about, again, it's an extremely reliable system, it's not as robust, doesn't do some of the things that some of the, you know, employee portal things that might happen, but in the grand scheme of everything that, you know, we want to do an SLT, it was kind of put, let's make sure it's reliable and we have a backup solution, but let's not change the solution as it's not, there's nothing broken with the, with the current one, it's just, you've got to get more of the leery of the age of it, I think, than anything else.
Is this the one that's not in this one?
It is, and the price of the A is four hundred, it's come down so much, we're going to get a second one. Yeah, they're, they're not free, they're like, rock and roll, but...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you can't get part, it's like by the old one.
Yeah, by two of them.
Yeah, by two, just miss one for part.
Right.
So, so we're comfortable with that, that software for another three years? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I think, I think, I understand your point, maybe moving the evaluation up, to evaluate it next year and that's probably what we'll do, I think it's always going to be on our, it's always something that comes up in our talking points, it's just when, when is it, when is the right to implement it? We look at it every, every six months, we look at it for a few weeks and it's, when's the time to change?
And then the other question was really, it's not about another device, but in terms of the master tech plan, if you look at our, our work plan for both plan for the year for student learning, in April we're supposed, supposed to merge the master facility plan and the master technology plan, and so much about FIT, and so much about the facility plan, it's about libraries, maker spaces, science standards, I'm wondering if there needs to be another category for libraries, or maybe the classroom infrastructure needs to be expanded to incorporate that as well.
Hey, I've just got one question, we haven't heard about it, so I guess everything's good, I know there was a lot of angst with the implementation of, what was it called, Synergy, and we've not heard much about that, so I'm assuming it's good, all the bugs are fixed, they've done, finally stepped up and did what they said they were going to do for all ten purpose?
Yes, it's, it's still, it's, we, it's still, you know, I'll be honest, it still struggles with its Illinois implementation. It's, we even, Eric and I were in a meeting with people the other day and maybe think we kind of questioned it, but Synergy's used widely in other areas, we were the first in Illinois, and it's, I think we kind of, they still have a few issues with state reporting, we get it done, but it's, it's never right the very first time, but we're working with it, and, and actually, you say that and I laugh because I think Laura was still here when I came up here, we did do a patch update tonight, so, I got one, I don't have any calls about Synergy in the morning, it's just a patch update, but it's something that was to address a lot of the things that the high schools were asking for and some of the scheduling pieces, so.
I remember some horror stories about having to, and I don't remember if that was coming through, a number, our numbers lady, I'm forgetting her name right now.
Julie.
Julie, yeah, that she was having to enter a lot of data manually and, and all that's...
Yeah, and part of that is that thing, we, last year in working with Synergy, we created now, we actually run this stuff quarterly, every three months to make sure that we're not at the end of the year really off on some of these things and they don't have to be updated, but Synergy does feed Julie's, the Dale Warehouse now, on a nightly basis, those people have access into a backup of Synergy that we've created, a backup instance of it so that they can tweak and pull the information that they need. I'm not going to say it's been great, but it's, it does what it needs to every day, it's, it's, it's hard to change those types of things and it's, it's, it's growing, honestly, you know, it's just like anything else, you don't want to change it every year, or four, five years now, I'm not speaking for everybody in the district, but I think we're at that point, so.
Just one final thought, the same, same way I comforted her, finish FIT, sixty-seven percent of our teachers so far say that the number of devices we add can hit its fit, I'm not comfortable with only saying that at a high school level, the thousand, or one grade level plus five devices. I'm just wondering, as we go through the budgeting process, can we raise that number even further within a high school level to make more accessible?
Brad, I don't, right now, I mean, I think it's a fair question, I don't think it's a, it's a budget piece, though, I guess, recognize that that definition for universal access was something that came out of the FIT committee that does include representatives from the high schools, so you could allocate more out of the budget, I guess, what I'm telling you right now is, this is the, the definition that I think they're comfortable with as we talk about trying to make sure that your investment in device keeps pace with the investment in the way that they're being used effectively for learning, so, you know, if you were to say as a board, we want to allocate more money and buy even more, I'm sure the folks would gladly accept them, but, but this is really the definition that, that I think, that...
I accept that, you know, I agree, if everybody agrees on, I'll agree too, but when I say six, two-thirds of the teachers say it's a barrier, that, that bothers me more, that is the number of devices.
Yeah, and that's right now, that's right now, right, part of that. But, but I think that's a great question, and again, I think that's a, a question that's going to have to continue to be evaluated, and, and I think one of the others, from one other point of conversation, I just want to kind of very, very quickly touch on, and that's, we, we have not, I think the, the board made, I think, a very wise decision several years ago to approach technology deployment in this way, to approach it through, let's make sure that the resource is aligned with the, the learning need, and, and I think that is a very, very smart decision. There is a point in the future, as that ratio continues to, to come down, and as we look at other modes of learning, there may be a point in the future where, where it is more effective at a particular level to begin conversation around an initiative that drives more toward one-to-one, right, but I, we're not there yet, I think this is the, the wise deployment, and, and I think nothing would tickle, you know, the FIT committee and Fay and Rod and, you know, everybody that's involved, and to continue to see that demand increase, right, that means it's being used appropriately to guide learning, and the only way we're going to do that is keep asking that question every year multiple times and, and see where we're at.
Any other thoughts, questions, comments? Thank you, Dr. Schuler.
We have one, we have one more topic for this evening, I think at the last board meeting, Brad and Jim previewed through the facilities committee that we were going to spend a little bit of time just talking about projected summer capital projects, so we've got, J.R., for a long time, we were sitting right below that quote, so I thought that thought bubble's coming right out of your head. We moved up at this point to talk to us about, about facilities, so I'm going to turn it over to Bill and J.R.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Yes, Mr. Ambiani and Mr. Paulson did a great job of updating the last facility committee meeting, which was, covered a lot of topics, including master facility planning, which that the board is aware is, is still ongoing, and we'll be bringing to you in March the final phase to move that process, but, but business does go on, we do have capital needs that continue, that the district evaluates, looking at our capital plan, which obviously will be tied in together as the board looks at the end of April, along with the master facility planning document, that capital plan, but we do have items that we have to move forward and continue to, you know, we've identified, and John's going to go through the items that we identified off that priority one, first year type list, and I'm going to let John discuss those, but again, we, and we'll talk a little bit about funding as well, but just wanted to, as was mentioned at the last meeting, share with the board the, with those projects, how we identified them, what the need is and where we're going to go. We are aggressively getting a lot of these projects out to bid or out for RFP or quotes, so we have a good idea, and could get a budget number that will incorporate into the two thousand sixteen, seventeen budget, some of the work may be able to be done yet out of this year's budget, and then next year we'll allocate some out of the budget, may have to look at a transfer of some fund balance over to our capital projects fund to get the work done. Right now, it looks like it would be no more than one point five million, but we're hoping for good bid numbers and obviously we'll, we'll keep the board updated through the budget process as we move forward and how we'll fund these projects. But I'm going to turn it over to JR right now, and he'll run through the list that we presented to the facility committee, where he and his team and staff and myself identified those projects that we feel to be critical to get done this summer.
Thanks, Bill. Like Bill said, we took a look at the 1.1s coming up for this summer, and listed them all by building and then by category. There are a couple of additions on this that weren't 1.1s, because frankly, they just, they came up out of nowhere, we needed them done. And we see that, you know, this document's a living, breathing document, so as, as, as things go bad, we will move them from a condition three to a one. In April, we plan on updating the board again with the entire plan of all three conditions. And we will reprioritize it at times, we always readjust, but this is going on last April's plan and a couple of new items. So we'll go just by category, so in the roofing category, we're going to replace pretty much all of Sandberg's roof. Just a new part, the new addition, that's still in good shape, but the old part, the optagon part, is, I think it's 30 years old. So it's, it's definitely a need replacement. The same with Monroe, Monroe's a very large roof, it's a very large building. But we're doing about one-seventh of the roof, it's three or four sections, plus a big, big hair in one section. Those two, we're hoping for favorable bids. We have it covered, there's always some what-ifs. For instance, in the row, there's a lot of gas pipe on the roof where we're going to go, so we have to move some gas pipe out there. And we don't know what we're going to get it to, we'll get to that. On the flooring side, I'll skip the flooring for a minute. Go to the very far row other, if we were north south, the bottom right there, should be my pointer. The bleachers, the main gym bleachers are 43 years old. And if you bend to south, you know they're well past their, so we are, probably one of our biggest priorities is replacing the bleachers. At the same time, we're going to tear the bleachers out and expose the floors, this is the perfect time to refinish our floors. It's been 14 years, done it, try to do it on a 10-year cycle, so we will sand it down, repaint it, and then refinish it at the same time. In the mechanical side, we have, at the very bottom, we have some compressors. Franklin, one of our stages, been out since last spring, do that, take some quotes on it, but we'll get that replaced before this coming season. These, these two are, probably can get done in this year's budget. At Washington, the control system there is, it's pneumatic control system, meaning it's air-driven. We used 30, 40 years ago, that's old, it's, it no longer works. So we run that building 24/7, wide open, because there's no way to control it. It's a waste of money, but the only way we can keep the building comfortable for the occupants. So we will look at replacing the control system in that way. On the far right column, the last piece, it says tuck pointing and basement. So Whittier next door, very old building, the tuck pointing is the, is the mortar between the bricks. It needs to be a whole building if you look at, so we have Leggett taking a little look at that right now. We're going to put a bid out, try to figure out what, what needs to be done. There's a chimney, if you go to the west side of the building, the park on, look at the chimney, you'll see cracks in it. It's falling apart, we need to take care of that. And then the basement, right there, underneath basement, there's some pretty bad degradation of that basement, the ceiling. We need to address that as well, so we'll try to hope for a solution. We feel that those two numbers should easily cover those costs. So that equals $2.4 million. These are the ones we prioritized as the highest of all the condition one ones. It would be great to have $12 million to it all, but we understand that budgetary constraints. So we did our best with what we thought really needed to get done, the facility committee and Bill and I, my staff, even our architects involved in this. And we're hoping that we can find a few bucks in this year's budget to get some of this done before June 30th. We'll have some money budgeted for next year, and like Bill said, we'll be looking for approval from you guys to possibly spend some of it. So before I get to my next topic, let's stop there and see if there's any questions on any of these items that you guys might have. So in terms of, do I need to turn that?
So in terms of the contracts that we would be approving, which ones would go through performance contracting versus which ones would be just like, sending up to the do-it-toe after?
Good question. Probably the only one we will use a performance contract on will be the Washington controls. The other mechanical ones, I can handle myself, so we won't have, pay markups to architects or contractors who have it done directly in the district. The roofs, the tuck pointing and the bleachers, we'll go through the architect. I will also handle Jim's floor directly as well.
And the control system we've been putting in Washington, is that the same type of system we've been doing?
The Alton system, tritium interface, same system we've got at Johnson, and the same system we have at North. And which color we're here, but those are our two most efficient buildings, because of the systems we have in place. So we can see my line, we get reports, we can tighten up the start time and end times. They're very comfortable buildings and they're very efficient buildings.
So we're moving towards a standard digital control system?
Yep. Like to get all 21 buildings done next year.
In one of our meetings, when we were talking about best learning environment, and it's, that light is such a factor, would there be any consideration, and I, to put skylights in Sandberg or Monroe when you're doing the roofs?
We have not looked at that. It's a good, it's a good question, because some of the items that we, that are on this, kind of fit with the master, the facility master plan. And the reason why we're not pushing them this summer is it's probably better to wait until the whole plan is put together and we can incorporate some of these into the facility master plan. Flooring is a great example. All objections, obviously. So, no, we, I haven't, we haven't given that any thought, but it's an interesting question.
It just would be the time to do it if you're going to do the roof.
I think at Sandberg, the section of roof we're doing, the interior parts of the building are the multipurpose room and the office areas. I think all the classrooms are around the exterior of the building, I do have windows if I remember correctly. I don't think there's any interior spaces that are classroom, other than that multipurpose room.
Skylight in the library.
Yeah, there's skylights in the library, I think, currently. So I think that, for the most part, we were in pretty good shape. You know, some type of skylights have their own issues with leakage and things of that nature. We put in the, if you recall it, Brad, you're going to tell me what they're called, the, in the music rooms, those interior spaces we put in. They're not skylights, they're, they're story lights.
They're story, thank you, which they are built up and have windows that kind of bring a light in that way. So in Monroe, I believe there are, there is, you know, skylights above the area that we're doing right outside of the little auditorium. There is actually a skylight there, I think it's somewhat covered by a light grill or something like that. But I think there are skylights up there as well. Any other questions on this? So the second piece, the facility section, is that 2016 marks our 10th anniversary of our last health life safety plan. So all schools are required to survey their buildings every 10 years, and this is our year. So we're going to, we need to do a survey of all our buildings except for Johnson and Hubble. They're on a different cycle, they don't follow the 16th cycle. So we'll do 18 buildings. We did obtain some quotes to get this work done from both architects that were working, Perkins and Will and Leggett. Not surprisingly, Leggett was chosen, they're, they were the better quote. They've done it before, they have a template on how to do it for our district, they know our district capacity. It doesn't, it didn't surprise us that they were best priced. So at our next board meeting, we will be bringing to you guys the goals that have been done. Hopefully get it approved at the board meeting, and then they have until December to get eighteen buildings walked and put the report together. And then that report through the ROE and to the IWA's website. So that's my report, Mr. Paulson, I just.
Yeah, I got a soapbox here about this. So they do their reports, they do their life safety surveys, we have to submit the life safety surveys, and we're on the clock to get it all done. They don't give us money to do that, right?
They need the state?
They, yeah, well, right.
Yes, we have to follow that.
Yeah, so once we submit it through IWA, some state, ISBE approves it, then we're on the clock to get the work done within three years, I'm calling. I think that's how many days, five years.
And you can get extensions.
So some of that work that's identified on the life safety survey may correspond with a lot of the work that's in our capital facilities. And so we may choose to fund it independent of submitting it on the survey. And then the other, I was just recently talking with a friend of mine who's an architect, who's on a school board, and he was suggesting that we shouldn't approve the survey because it's going to start to go.
It's going to be a long time to figure out that we haven't submitted it yet, so our clock will start ticking in terms of when we have to.
So I'm just going to let the board know that once we complete the surveys, we have to submit it, and then we're on the clock to do the work. If we don't do the work, then we have to submit an application or extension for every individual building. It's actually one survey per building.
Are you suggesting that the 10-year life safety survey is unfunded and mandated?
Do it my way, life for us, yes.
Yes, it is.
I'm sure the board will do the right and appropriate thing.
So that's all I had from facilities, there's no more questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, JR. Dr. Schuler, is it?
And that's it, but just in summary, again, thank you to the board both for the direction around FIT. So think about the three topics for tonight and the things that you talked about, significant movement around future of instruction and technology and what that means for our students. I think significant investment in terms of, again, where we're taking technology, and again, well, we know there's a lot of work to do, about $2.5 million worth of work on our facilities. So thank you for that support, I think around those three areas, those are three significant areas around which I think you're helping to support movement. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler, I've just been informed we have no public comments. So there being no further action to come to before the board, no concession, I'll ask for a motion on a second to adjourn the meeting.
What's that move?
Moved by Mrs. Cottill. Second by Mrs. Cockill. All those in favor, please say in five by sign aye.
Aye.
Or no opposed, or motion against.